Everybody, I am going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 6th to order, and it is now 6:02 PM, and we will start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. And seeing nobody, we don't have anybody online either. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Also, go to our website for any other additional events or notices. And we have our town election coming up on May 17th, so that's a week from Saturday. Along those lines, tonight is Tyler Bouchard's official, almost last meeting. Almost, we may have to have a special meeting.
First official, regular meeting.
That's right.
There you go.
So I would like to take a moment to recognize and sincerely thank Tyler Bouchard for his dedicated service to the town of Kingston as a member of the Board of Selectmen. Elected in 2022, Tyler brought a thoughtful, forward-looking approach to town governance. As Vice Chair of the Board, he played a pivotal role in navigating complex issues that have shaped Kingston's future. Tyler championed efforts to modernize town operations. He supported the exploration of a unified Department of Public Works, emphasizing the importance of learning from similar communities to improve efficiency and service delivery. In times of fiscal challenge, which is always, Tyler was a voice of prudence. During budget discussions, he highlighted the need for sustainable financial planning, cautioning against short-term fixes that could lead to long-term issues. And we appreciate your views and help through that. Beyond his role on the Board of Selectmen, Tyler served on the Waterfront Committee, I believe you were the Chairman of that as well, demonstrating his commitment to preserving and enhancing Kingston's natural resources. And you were always able to give us some good information about what was going on. We appreciate that. Though Tyler has chosen not to seek reelection, his contributions have left a lasting impact on our community. His dedication, insight, and leadership have helped guide Kingston through important decisions and set a course for a promising future. On behalf of the town and all who have had the pleasure of working alongside him, thank you, Tyler, for your service, your time, and your unwavering commitment. I would say we wish you all the best in your next chapter, but I think town service is going to be another chapter later on. I think you just have it in you. I'm sure you're going to be involved again. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. All right, on to open forum. Is there anybody here who wanted to speak?
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to thank everyone for participating in the annual Keep Kingston Clean event. I saw people all over town participating, and it's just really great to see, and I wanted to say thank you.
All right.
We do have a, we do have a hand up online.
For open forum?
Oh, the hand is not up anymore, so maybe not.
Hello?
Will?
Christian to the Murphy Main Street, I just wanted to ask you, what is the rule for noise ordinances and noise complaints?
Did he say rule? What's the rule? What are the rules, yeah, for noise complaints?
Uh...
Good question.
Yeah, go ahead. So if I...
Congratulations, Tyler.
Thank you, Will, appreciate it.
Well, I don't have all those, I don't have the specifics. There is a noise ordinance in town. I don't know what the decibel levels are, but I can, I can, I'm sure, I can get that for you, and next time I see you, I'd be happy to share it with you. It is challenging to cite somebody for a violation of the, of the noise ordinance, but nonetheless, if there's an issue that is of concern to you, if you want to let the town know when that excessive noise is occurring, we'd be happy to go out and investigate it.
Okay, thanks, Keith.
You bet. Was there anybody else here in the audience who wanted to speak during open forum? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to our appointment at 6:00 PM for a dangerous dog hearing. We've received an email from Joanna Bedrow, the ACO, indicating there was another incident involving the dogs at 44 Rabith Road. I'm going to turn this over to Attorney Steve Chaplin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. For the record, Attorney Stephen Chaplin, me, Taller, and Acosta, we're Town Council in the town of Kingston. Set a little bit of context here for those watching on TV and those in the audience who might not be familiar with this procedure. Whenever a complaint is received in a town that there's been a dog attack, statute actually vests the Select Board as a hearing authority to investigate the attack and to make a determination as to whether the dog is what we call a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog. Those terms are defined by statute, and then if either one of those findings are made, the Board is directed by statute to order the owner or the keeper of the dog to implement remedial measures. In this case, we have a kind of unique procedural posture. The dogged issue in this case was actually the subject of a hearing last year, so just to recap for the Board and for those in attendance who are all on the same page, there was a, there was a hearing that was held late last summer, testimony was taken, witnesses were sworn, the uncontroverted testimony at that time established that multiple, multiple delivery drivers had been attacked by the owner's two dogs. There was a finding made at that time that the dogs are dangerous. It was a 3-2 vote. There were remedial measures that were ordered to be put in place at that time. To, again, set the context for people who may be less familiar with these proceedings or these type of procedures, the remedial measures that a Board can order can be restraint, muzzling, confinement, neutering, or spaying, ordering that the owner purchase liability insurance, that the owner use microchipping or identification or some other method of identification, and then the most extreme option is that a dog may be ordered to be put down. In this particular case, the Board ordered confinement, liability insurance in the amount of $100,000, and, and neutering. The, to update the Board, the confinement that the Board ordered is in place, but it's only been in place for about a week. So, in an effort to be proactive here and to make best use of everybody's time, I'm going to put forth a couple options for the Board that I wouldn't usually put forth. Typically, we would bring up the first witness, swear him in, and proceed with a full evidentiary hearing, and we're certainly prepared to do that this evening if that's what the Board deems appropriate. Since the insurance issue, as I understand it, there's currently no insurance in place, insurance was applied for, it was denied because I believe the fencing was either not in place yet or photographs of the fencing had not been sent to the insurance company. As I understand it, the owner is in the process of reapplying for the insurance on the insurance piece. On the confinement piece, as I stated, the fencing has been up, but it's been up for a relatively short period of time. So, two options I would put forth to the Board if they may, they may deem it more appropriate in light of the unique procedure that we have, is we could put this hearing over for some period of time in the future, or we could take some supplemental tests, I would call that option A. Option B, we could take some supplemental testimony from the, from the victim in this case, who had an incident with one of the dogs. That, I would call that option B. Then option C, we could proceed with a, with a full evidentiary hearing. I do submit that maybe one of the abbreviated options might, might be more feasible in light of the unique circumstances.
So my question is, and I apologize if I don't pronounce the name correctly, but it was Sean Stangalini who, is that you, sir?
Yes, well pronounced, thank you.
Okay, good. So you, you came here tonight, and I'm assuming that you were prepared to speak, so I would leave that up to you. If you would like to stand up and speak and provide your testimony as to what happened, I would recommend that we at least do that, rather than just postponing it, at least take some testimony from Mr. Stangalini.
Yeah, because it also means he won't have to come back out if he doesn't need to, so...
Right. All right, so I would say let's move forward with that if you want to...
So I think that was option B?
Right.
Yeah.
Option B. So, Mr. Stangalini, if you could please come up to the podium, and I'm going to, I'm going to swear you in because we are, we're going to do a modified evidentiary hearing. So as soon as you get to the podium, I'll swear you in.
No, I think we do, I think we do want to do that. We're going to pass that back to Keith.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Could you please state your full name for the record?
Sure. Sean Stangalini.
And Mr. Stangalini, we've received some information relative to events occurring on or about March 29th of this year at your home. Could you inform the Board what, what occurred on that date?
Sure. Could I back up just a little bit, just to add some context?
Absolutely.
Thank you kindly. So about 2023, in the, in the fall, my wife and I purchased 46th Rabith Road, which abuts 44th Rabith Road. It's kind of out in the woods. Forty, at that time, 44th Rabith Road was kind of like the only house there that far out. There was a cabin, but it was kind of abandoned. So my wife and I purchased the property, and we began the building process into 2024. We're still working on a few things now. The, the dogs initially had kind of free rein, but you know, there wasn't anybody out there, and I had a, one of the first things I did was have a conversation with Tom, the gentleman that lives at 44th Rabith Road, about the dogs for a couple of reasons. A, I first want to say I love dogs. I've had Dobermans since the 80s, of, just in basic obedience, I've been to like multiple training opportunities and so forth, so I'm quite familiar with dogs. And I was concerned about the dogs for several reasons. One, where they kind of had a bit of a free rein, particularly going off into the, the right-of-way and a little bit into our property at times. I was concerned because the builders would be there, as well as my wife and I like to walk or run, and would be going through the right-of-way, and where we have dogs, I didn't want anything to happen. So there's a little bit of context. I'm not particularly concerned in myself, but I am concerned about my wife because the, the dogs have a lot of energy and they're big dogs. I also have two kids. The, in about June roughly, one of the dogs had charged at me when I was standing was standing the right of way and, and I, I don't know if you guys saw the video, but I just, this is, I did the same thing. I yelled at him and he stopped. Um, and I was aware that the dogs had, um, bitten, uh, several people. Actually, uh, one of the dogs had, um, bitten a friend of mine. I actually, uh, he signed a letter, um, i- if you folks wanted to see it. What happened was there was a vehicle in the right of way and, um, it was parked. I presumed it belonged to the people at 44, so, uh, my friend Carlos went to go knock on the door and two of the dogs chased him. And so Carlos ran and, um, one of the dogs ended up biting him. The dog didn't cause any damage. Um, uh, Carlos, uh, didn't, uh, speak to any authorities because he, he wasn't, um, uh, injured. Uh, the gentleman that, uh, came out, he was a younger gentleman. He also said, "You shouldn't have ran, that's why the dogs chased you." And then he wanted to fight my friend Carlos, which Carlos denied to fight. He wasn't interested in that sort of thing. Um, there, um, uh, I know that signage was, was put up. I had watched a, a previous, um, uh, meeting that you folks had held. And, um, so that, one of the signs, uh, says, well, there's actually two signs, uh, like this, that says, "Private property, no trespassing, uh, not responsible for injury or death." Now, um, I believe it's probably a little bit of a, an overstatement, but in, in my view, the dogs aren't well-trained. I, I actually don't think the dogs are like vicious, vicious and go out and attack and, and like try to hurt somebody. But I don't think the dogs are well-trained. And, and that's, I don't think, given they're a little bit territorial, they had the opportunity to sort of have the free range and now we're there. And I don't know if they sort of understand that. So I think there's a big socialization concept of training that the dogs need, i- in my view. Um, I, I, I think also it would probably benefit them if they had a bigger fenced-in area because I think they're all pent up with energy. I don't think they're particularly old. But anyway, so, all right, uh, now we'll get to the point. I apologize. I went off, I just want to give you some context. Um, so, uh, uh, perhaps six or eight weeks ago, um, I was, I had, um, my two dogs, uh, in the car. I, I actually live in Plymouth, they're, uh, registered in Plymouth. And, um, uh, I, I, you know, pulled up into the driveway and one of the dogs, uh, followed us, uh, us down and he came up to the car. And I came out like, because I've petted the dog before and, you know, I, I try because I love dogs. I, you know, I, I, um, uh, you know, I want to have a relationship with the dogs, you know. Um, but anyway, um, one of them, uh, for whatever reason, uh, lunged at me and he, uh, lunged and hit my, hit my hip and, you know, he, I believe he, he tried to, well, he did try to bite me, um, but he wasn't able to get a purchase because he hit my hip. Um, and then so I yelled at him and he ran away and, and Tom, uh, came and, uh, took the dog away. So, um, I went in, I opened the dogs up, I took my two dogs that were both on leashes into the house and, uh, the same dog came right back down, uh, probably like three minutes later, like racing right at us and I, I yelled at him again and he, he does listen. He, he stopped right in the tracks and, um, and, you know, proceeded, you know, back to his yard. Um, it, so i- in my view, I worry about my wife, I worry about my kids, uh, I worry about other people because I know other people have been bitten. The, um, the real estate people were, were very afraid of going down there, uh, because it was a little bit unpredictable. They'd call to see if they'd take care of the dogs and they weren't sure if the dogs would be put away or not. This is in 2023 before, um, the, uh, you know, the, uh, biting incidents that has occurred. I think that's about it. I do have, um, a picture of the sign and, um, Carlos, uh, what he had said had happened. If you folks want to see it, if not, I can just keep it here.
I think we have a copy of the sign and, and the videos that you sent, but I don't think we have, um, the letter from Carlos. So if you wanted to submit that-
Sure.
We can, we can take that. Are there, are there any questions from, from the board?
I don't have any questions.
No questions from council.
All right, so thank you very much for, for coming here tonight. Um, I appreciate you, you taking the time to come up and explain it. So thank you very much.
Sure, thank you and, uh, thank you for saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. And welcome to Kingston. It sounds like you're, you're new, so, yeah.
Sir? Sir? Do you have the copy of that letter?
Oh, no, you can have it, yeah.
All right. All right, so, um, at this point, if we, um, we can, we can choose to, um, postpone this to July, correct? After July 1st, so the 60 days with, um, this fence being in place.
Do we typically allow the owner to respond to the complaint after we hear from someone? I didn't know.
We typically do.
Okay, but not in this case.
We tip, the, it's whatever the board, um, if, if the owner has questions for the neighbor-
Okay.
Um, then we, the owner could ask those questions now. Uh, if the board would like to take testimony from, from the owner?
I just wasn't sure and I just didn't want it to feel just sort of one-sided, I guess.
It's, it's fine with me if, if we want to ask, um, is there anything that you wanted to say?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I mean, just-
Sorry, she's gonna-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I know you're on rocking duty, so.
And, and the, and the other piece of it is if, if the hearing is continued, additional testimony could be taken at that time as well.
Okay.
I just wasn't sure and I know it's a little bit unorthodox from what we typically see, so.
It is. We could, we could do it either. We, we have you on the same, I'm just gonna swear you in if you could, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths?
Yes.
Thank you. Witness is sworn.
Awesome. Um, all I want to say is, you know, I, I appreciate you guys fast-tracking this a little bit. Um, so at, at the time that incident occurred with, with Mr. Stangalini, um, I was in the hospital, my son was in the NICU, he was just born. My husband made a little bit of a poor judgment call, let the dogs stretch their legs for a little bit, so it's not the norm. Um, there has been a fence in place for, I think, over a year now. It wasn't up to snuff for, um, animal control, so the fence that's there now, they did just approve recently, but there has been a fenced-in enclosure for over a year. Um, as far as insurance goes, we do have liability insurance with our homeowners. Um, I was not able to get a copy of it today. Um, I saw the request after 4:00 PM when our insurance, uh, agency was already closed. So was not able to get a copy of that, but I have requested it. Um, so just keeping that in mind as well. Um, but there has been a fence there for over a year, just recently, it has been approved.
One quick follow-up question. So your testimony is there actually is insurance in place, you just don't have proof of it?
Yeah, there's liability insurance, yep.
In, in the amount required by the board?
I believe so. I'm not a hundred percent certain without seeing the policy, but we do have it. So as soon as I get it, I'll make sure to share.
Thank you. I, I don't have any further questions.
I don't think so either. So, um, just a quick question. So would we-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can she sit down again?
Yeah, 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 we're, we're done. So I think we would still want to make a motion to reaffirm and ratify the decision from August, correct? And then, um, then we could potentially continue the matter after that. So we would need to make both motions.
Yeah, and, and the second motion, um, in talk, in checking with Steve's schedule, if the board's willing to, to, um, continue the meeting till, till July, July 1st at 6:15.
Got it.
Attorney Chaplin is available. He, he'd come back and, um, we could continue to that date in time certain.
Okay, so, um, we'll want to make most, both motions. Would anybody like to make the first one?
I move that the Board of Selectmen reaffirm and ratify its decision of July 30th, 2024, including its prior finding that Bert is a dangerous dog as the term is defined in Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 136A.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. And then the second motion, um, for July 1st at 6:15.
I move that the Board of Selectmen continue this matter until July 1st, 2025, at 6:15 PM for further consideration as to what additional remedial measures, if any, will be ordered pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right, that's unanimous. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Just for clarity's sake, are we, um, anticipating additional testimony being needed from, um, from Mr. Stangalini or anyone else? I just want to make sure that they know whether or not we're hoping they attend that July 1st hearing.
I would anticipate no additional testimony from Mr. Stangalini.
Okay.
However, I would anticipate some additional testimony in the way of an update from, from the owner as well as animal control, just, um, you know, gaining final clarification on the insurance piece. Um, if there's been any, hopefully there are no further incidents, but if there were a further incident, then you would be taking testimony-
Right.
-on, on that at that time.
Not that anyone isn't welcome to attend public hearings or our meetings. I just want to make sure that the expectation is clear to folks if they don't want to be here or they can't be here.
That, that, right, that information and that testimony is on the record, it's part of the record, so there, there will be no need to repeat anything that's, that's already been, um, no, that's the word I'm looking for, that, that's already been put into the record. It doesn't need to be put in twice, but if there are updates as to what occurs between now and the hearing, that will certainly be appropriate testimony at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And you can also attend via Zoom too.
Mm-hmm.
So if you can't make it but want to log in remotely.
It is a, it is a holiday week, so, maybe thank you.
What if, in the past two years, how many, how many, it's, how many dog hearings have you had?
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
And we euthanized one?
Four, yeah.
So it's a, it, it can happen. I'm not gonna be here on July 1st, but it can happen. It's a really good reminder that this board can euthanize your dog. And I don't mean to be harsh or, but you need to be a good neighbor to your neighbor with those animals. And that's your, that's your job. And I know you have another month, even more important job next to you, which I respect, but that's one of the things that pissed me off being here for three years, was sitting here watching other people's dogs talk other people's animals and then waiting months and months for it to be resolved, when in the old days we'd resolve very, very easily and it shouldn't be like that. So my recommendation is that people be good neighbors, take care of your dogs, keep them the hell away from other people's property. And I say that with due respect because we've already killed a dog this year. And so we don't like doing this. It's really unpleasant. Um, all of us are dog owners, dog lovers, animal lovers, but we also care more about human beings than dogs. So it's a really good reminder that that's our responsibility. And so I will not be voting on that in July, so you'll have one, I mean, less, I guess, frustrated selectman, and I say this out of just the duty of this board, but it's already been set and precedent that we've already done that. And so I hope that doesn't happen to your family and to your dogs, but that's on you. So, um, I hope that everything gets resolved and is properly dealt with and for everybody, that all neighbors can come together and mend relationships, but I make those statements because it's been a crazy couple of years of dog hearings and you've been here a few times during that time. So, yeah, that's where we're at.
All right, thank you. Um, I think we are done. We're ready to move on to the next item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item includes a word that I can never pronounce. So I looked it up online. Victualer, but it says vit-
No. We say victular usually.
It's, it's, it, so when I looked it up on ChatGPT, it said to pronounce it vit-ler.
I'm not sure that AI is always right.
I know.
Okay.
So I'm gonna say it the, the awkward way.
All right.
The next item is an approval of a new common victualer license.
Now, I don't even remember how to say it right.
For SlackTide.
Shall we just make the motion?
Coffee roasters. Um, go, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to make sure that I don't have any issues with those hours. Does anyone have any issues with the hours they're proposing?
Yeah, so the set application will be at, uh, former, former Nino's Deli for the hours of 6:00 AM to 3:30 PM.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can make the motion, then we can discuss.
All right, I move the Board of Selectmen approve the new common victular license for SlackTide coffee roasters contingent on final approval from the Board of Health until December 31st, 2025.
Second, the second, all right. So, uh, before we take the vote, um, are there any issues, um, with the hour 6:00 AM to 3:30 PM?
No.
None?
No. All right.
How's it going?
You're welcome to speak if you have anything, um, that you want to say, but I think-
What time does school let out? Because it's definitely-
Not in time to get coffee.
Just in time to get coffee, all right.
Perfect timing.
I think you have a lot of people in town who are excited about you guys coming.
For sure, yes. We got two thumbs up in the back.
As somebody who, yeah, as somebody who, um, we go there like once a week because we, um, we, uh, my kids go to tumble fun.
Yeah.
And, uh, absolutely love SlackTide, it's fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, really excited to be, yeah.
He's SlackTide famous.
So much money over there in Marfield, so excited to spend it in Kingston, but no, we're excited to have there. I, uh, my, one of my first jobs was working there when it was Anthony's Deli back in the, back in the 2000s, so it's exciting to see somebody come in there and, and revitalize it.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah, excited to have you there.
Awesome.
Hopefully soon, we'll see.
Very cool.
Okay. It looks like everyone signed off on it, department heads, so.
Yep, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, uh, is it 6:15? Oh, yeah, we're after 6:15. So we have a public hearing for an authorization to establish a-
Do we need to say we're skipping number three or?
Oh, yeah, so number three, um, Keith, we are skipping it, the presentation of the recommended streets, the resurface.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be on, on the 20th, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, we've got a public hearing for authorization to establish a range for firearms training and mandatory qualifications on town-owned property. So at our last meeting, we had a presentation, um, by Detective Scavera, uh, showed us a PowerPoint, described what's going on. Um, we had asked that we, um, first have a public hearing before we take any votes on this and Kim, you were not here at the last meeting.
I watched it.
Right, yep, excellent. Um, so for those, for anyone that, that, that doesn't know, well, let me turn it over. Detective Scavera, do you, do we have the, the presentation that we just want to have ready just in case?
I have, uh, I have the two pictures.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have the original presentation if needed as well.
I don't think we should.
Okay.
Don't have to represent the whole thing.
No, no, no.
I did already watch the presentation and I know you all watched it as well.
So we will probably have some questions, but I'm gonna open it up and this isn't a formal hearing, so we don't have to make a motion to open the public hearing. But is there anybody here who would like to speak?
Or ask questions?
Or ask questions? No.
Doug?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I had received a few email questions as well, so I can ask those.
Uh, thanks for having this hearing. It was kind of, first of all, Doug Dondara, 14 Copper Beach Drive. It was a surprise to get that in the mailbox. And I'm just open to hear more about it, actually. Are you going to continue to talk more about it or?
We, we will and, and I'll, it is a public hearing, so if you have questions after we talk about it, I'm more than happy to recognize you and let you.
Probably be better for me to listen a little bit because I may get some questions answered by listening.
Right. So I have some questions as well. So I know I had spoken to the, the, the chair of the elementary school committee. So the schools, I believe, are about a thousand yards, if I, if I eyeballed that on a map, from where this would be. So the question that they asked was whether it would be possible to do more of this when school is not in session. But also, and I know you guys talked about this last time, I just can't remember. What I'm trying to figure out is how much this is going to affect like kids when they're out at recess. So obviously there's a spring break, there's April vacation week. There's not a similar one in the fall, obviously, but there's a, there's a Christmas one. But I think you guys were looking at, at twice a year, every six months or so. Do you, have you guys thought that through in terms of trying to coincide with school vacation week or when kids are out of school in the afternoon? My, my recollection was that this was going to be, it could be all day long for up to a week.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So relative to school days and things of that nature, I don't, I, they will hear it, right? They will hear it. I do not believe it to be a volume from that distance that'll be an impact, right? So, you know, you can drive through parts of Plimpton, parts of Hanson, parts of Plymouth. You'll hear the gunshots from their various private gun ranges from throughout various parts of town. I don't think it's going to be of such a volume that it would impact anybody at the school, especially with them being aware that this exists. And obviously, if they have concerns about hearing gunfire, they call the police department. The police department says, that's us at the range. To that point, I wouldn't want to commit to saying, we'll just do it on school vacation week or something like that. That could be difficult as far as scheduling for the department. And to your point as well, Mr. Chair, it's only twice a year that the department is doing our annual training. Each training event typically three to four days to get the whole department through. So you're talking roughly eight days a year of live firearms training at minimum. And then, like we discussed at the public, I'm sorry, at the last meeting, there would be some additional days potentially, whether it be some additional tactical training we do or individual officers on their own time getting some additional training below the state minimum standard. But just to give a rough idea, it's not like it's going to be three, four, five days a week every week.
Keith?
Yeah, Lieutenant, you know, maybe as a happy medium, what we could, what you might be willing to do is notify the school on the days you're going to use, utilize the range. So at least they're aware, they might be able to proactively make an announcement prior to recess or something along those lines that, you know, you may be hearing faint gunshots. It's the police department doing some training, so at least the kids are aware of what's going on. Might be a, might be a reasonable, you know, middle point that you guys can agree to.
Yeah, definitely. A good, good suggestion, at least to the administration. They might not choose to give it out to all the kids, right? The second graders about, you know, shooting guns, but it might make sense for the administration to be aware.
I was going to say, that was going to be my point.
I was picturing the kindergarten nurse.
At least two days a week, we typically have a school resource officer on the property at KES or KIS, so.
Right.
The questions that, and concerns that I received through email or just people talking about it after the meeting were related to being able to anticipate when the, the range would be used. So the idea of it being available all the time, any day, it could happen at any point, people sort of had objections to. However, I think they were more receptive to the idea of if we know it's always potentially on these days of the weeks between these hours. I'm not trying to limit the police department's ability to use the range. But if, let's say you live, I don't know, in a really nice house and you want to host a wedding or a baby shower at your house, and then all of a sudden it's just gunfire because you're not that far away and the sound is carrying because it's a high point in town. It would be nice to know, okay, it could be, I, I can't give you the days that make sense because I don't know what makes sense for your, your department. But would you be willing, the department, to limit days or times so that people could anticipate it a little bit better?
Yeah, and I believe generally those, I understand those concerns, but I, I believe they're going to come to find that it's less often than they suspect and it's not as severe sound-wise as they expect. I don't want to commit to specific days or times because of two things, right? The MPDC, the state requires us to do certain training. We're required by law to do certain training, which includes low light training. So sometimes that would have to be in the early evening. Also, for instance, if we have an officer out IOD and he's coming back to work, that might not line up well for the day we normally would fire at the range. And then we're what, leaving him out of work, unpaid, without being aware for more days until he can fire his gun. So there's logistical concerns with limiting us to specific days. But there's always the opportunity, let's say hypothetically, the board approves its request without those types of restrictions. And in a year, you've received multiple complaints, we could come back before the board. You could request us to come back and we could place restrictions if the board feels necessary.
That was the second, the second question is, we may need to just revisit it after we try this out. And you may find that, oh, it turns out we're only really doing it on, I don't know, Mondays and Tuesdays. And maybe it's between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, but it turns out scheduling-wise, this worked, we could limit it. Maybe you don't know that yet.
Right, and that's why I just don't want to limit us specifically at this point. But I, I want to make it clear that we intend to be completely reasonable, right? We, we want the community to be okay with this range. This is a resource we're hoping to be able to have. This is something that's important to us. We don't want to ruin it, right? So of course, we don't want to upset the community by having the range. But we have to balance that with the requirements that we have to be able to stay compliant as police officers, right? And of course, we would work with the board. And it's still, at the end of the day, the board controls this property. If at some point you're not happy with our use of the range, call us before you, we can make adjustments, we're happy to do that.
I think that's, I think that was my, my, my thought coming from it last time was, you know, it's not like we're debating selling this stuff to some developer, private range. That's a whole different ballgame than living next to Old Colony Range in Pembroke or something like that. If there's an issue, if this is the board that, you know, this is, this is, this is the board that gets to do that. And I know you're alluding to that as well.
Absolutely.
But I just think that it's, it's our department, you know, it's our town's department. You guys care about the safety in complaint. The calls go to you. So you're not going to want, you're not going to want 25 residents calling you. And if that, that does happen, that will come before the chief and come before this board. And I think that it's, it's easily regulated in that, in that sense that we're not selling this off to anybody. This is, this is our, this is our town, this is our town's police department. And ultimately, this is the board's decision through the chief. And I think that even before it probably got here, the chief will probably, if there was an issue, probably be able to remedy it himself. You know, we're not selling this thing off, it's in-house, and we have the ability to, to modify with, if there's issues that come up. I think people get really nervous and rightfully so about guns and noises and stuff like that. And I could be totally wrong, I don't live right there, but being around a lot of guns in, in those scenarios, my guess is it'll be a lot more stifled than people think it is. And those days will be scattered and a lot less than people think it is. That's, that's, that's my opinion on it, I don't know. I'll be happy to be in the cheap seats when, when, if, if there's, if there's an issue and I can stand up there and yell and scream about it when that happens. But I just think that it's an easily remedy, it's an easy remedy as a town because it is our town using it. It's our town's resources.
And, and I think the, the important thing for the audience to understand, we, they, they said this two weeks ago. They're going to be using environmentally friendly, lead-free ammunition, which does cost more, but is better than leaving all that lead out in that area. And it's also important to know that, and just remind me again, but the shooting is going to be parallel to the railway and sort of up that way in that picture.
That's correct.
Away from the transfer station.
And this is actually a slightly modified version of what we previously submitted. And I can speak to it if you'd like, Mr. Chair. And I also, if you'd like, I can give a 60-second recap for those in the audience that maybe didn't see.
Sure.
Last meeting. So last meeting, last board of selectman meeting, I came before the board with the chief's approval, of course, to request a use of the parcel that's by the wastewater treatment plant, by the dump, to be able to have a police firearms range. For years, we haven't had a range. We've had to beg, borrow, and steal from other departments. We're required by state statute to train at least twice a year with our firearms. And essentially, as we've begged, borrowed, and steals for years and years, it's led into additional scheduling issues, logistical issues. And realistically, it's something that we are required to do, that I think the town has the capacity to support its own police department in doing. Relative to the selection of the property, there weren't a lot of choices. I did hear some questions as to maybe a study for which parcel should be used and things of that nature. The police department, working with the town clerk's office, did a very thorough review of all town-owned property. Frankly, this was the only parcel that really worked and met all the requirements to include 150 feet from a roadway, 500 feet or more from a residence. Also, we, we looked at some conservation and wetlands issues. Our conservation agent, Matt Pinella, worked with us to make sure that we're in compliance there. There's a lot of considerations that led us to this property and we also look to mitigate certain issues. For instance, the chairman referenced using lead-free ammo and things of that nature. Obviously, no matter what, you put a range somewhere, it's going to be somewhat close to someone, right? And they're going to hear the gunshots. I just don't think it's going to be too overly intrusive and it's going to accomplish something that's very necessary for the police department.
Lieutenant, if I could, one of the things that you mentioned before, just to clarify, you can't, you cannot do this on sanctioned conservation land, correct?
Correct.
So that was one of the big things, because a lot of our, we have a lot of land in this town. We all know, we're all big walkers, runners, hunters, you know, whatever, dog walkers. And, but most of that, most of that's in conservation land, so it cannot be used for that purpose. So this is town-owned land, but that's not in conservation. So that's one of the great reasons why, and I, you've said that. But that's one of the things I thought about last time and somebody asked me about, like, we have like thousands of acres of land. It's like, well, a lot of that land is in Conservation Easement or under the Conservation Department. So that's a, it's a different, it's a different zoning that we can't allow that to happen in. And this particular parcel is not in that.
Correct. And relative to the new map you have before you, I have paper copies if anybody on the board would like it. But you'll notice it's slightly different. Before, the range I submitted to you was 150-foot firing range and then a, I believe it was 75-foot staging area. And we reduced it slightly. The conservation agent, Matt Pinella, kind of helped us out. He went out to the property that was previously marked by DEP as all swampland. That's that hashed area in the top right there you see. When he went out there, he was able to ascertain that there was a small portion of that that's actually a vernal pool. So it has slightly different protections of no 200-foot standoff as compared to a 100-foot standoff. So as a result of that, we had to adjust the placement of the range slightly, reduce our staging area a little bit. In practice, it's really not going to impact our tactical training capabilities down there. It's just a slight movement and a slight reduction of the, like I said, the staging area. But that's, that's inconsequential. And it, the way that we designed it, we're 50 feet outside of the 200 feet. So we left an additional buffer to make sure we're not within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission as designed. I went out there with a couple of our guys, we used a laser rangefinder and made sure that we were out, well outside of that. To that point, if for whatever reason, something were to change as far as the property or we run into issues in building it or something occurs, you know, something else is built, whatever it may be, that adjusts, that would require us to adjust the placement of the range. The conservation agent made a great suggestion relative to the language of the motion, you'll see it before you tonight, that if we do find ourselves having on that parcel, having to be within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, which we can with Conservation Commission's approval, then we would obviously have to have that approval. So as designed, we are not within their jurisdiction, we'll be outside of that. But if something were to change and we had to be within the 200 feet, which is that light blue, almost gray circle around the dark blue, then you would see us needing to get a Conservation Commission approval if that's what the board decided to do. And after our conversation today, I think we're all on the same page and in agreement that that's the best course of action.
And we would have some sort of signage there because if folks know there's a firing range, they may think it's open to the public. But we'll have some signs that say this is for police use only.
Yes.
I, I, I was at the transfer station this weekend dropping off the 50,000 Amazon cardboard packages that I have to do every couple of weeks.
Thank God we have a nearby facility.
And I just publicly shamed my wife and daughter. All the chewy boxes. Right. None of it's mine. But anyways, I looked and, and the transfer station guys were saying it was just kind of down a hill, just off to the side. So it, it does drop as you're looking down. And I'm assuming up to the railroad tracks, the railroad goes up as well. So it's, it's down below that or is it the same?
It's almost kind of similar height leveling as the railroad tracks. But by the design, to your point, it is a natural depression, which is actually helpful. Also, by the design of the parcel itself, its access for unauthorized individuals is very limited. You would have to jump a railroad fence, the railroad tracks to get over there. You would have to walk across a highway, the breakdown lane, or you would have to jump the transfer station fence, right? So there's a lot of protections protecting that and we would still post it and potentially take other measures to ensure that there is no unauthorized access. At this time, it is intended just to be law enforcement use, of course, and that, that would be the plan, period.
Okay, all right. Any other questions here?
The closest homes currently are on Copper Beach Drive?
That's correct, ma'am. So a little over 500 feet on Copper Beach Drive before you reach that parcel.
Okay, okay. I mean, it sounded like we have flexibility with adjusting if we need to look at times and days that make sense. We need to try this first. Do you think you would be communicating, like if we're going to be using the range? We post something on the, the police website or, I don't know how often this is going to happen. So I'm looking to you guys to say, to avoid the, I hear gunfire calls.
Right, and, and it potentially.
Are we going to be proactive?
It's potentially something we could post, at least especially for our more voluminous use days, so our spring shoot and our fall shoot, right? So I mentioned last meeting, there could be opportunities where, say a firearm goes down, there's a malfunction physically with a firearm. We're shooting off 10 rounds, we probably wouldn't make a post, right? There's one officer that needs to get requalified because he was out injured, probably not going to make a post. We have eight to 10 guys firing several hundred rounds, we'd probably make a post.
Okay, that makes sense, just to communicate and save you guys the trouble of answering those phone calls as well.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So I open it back to the public if anybody has any questions or comments.
For your presentation.
Thank you.
You said you looked at other areas. Off the top of my head, I was thinking behind the Kingston Fire Station number two, across from Marty's GMC. Back there, there's nobody. There's nothing anywhere, and that's town-owned property. And it looks like you could really develop something behind that police station, a fire station, excuse me, that would be.
Is that the land, Doug, though, that we just?
Behind the fire station?
Yeah, I think that's the land we just, isn't that the land we just, no, it's near that land, though.
I mean, the, the, the land that we may be able to acquire is right, is, butts the fire station, right? So I'm not sure what specific, what specific property you're referring to. There may be a deed restriction for conservation, I'm not sure. So if you can let us know which, where those, I mean, I can certainly identify with. I just know that behind there, there's a parking lot that they built for Lowe's for overflow parking further in the woods and it's never been used. And there's no houses there, there's, there's nobody. Yeah, I think that is owned by Lowe's. But I'm talking about what the town owns behind the fire station that really never gets used. As a thought. The other thought I had was the well on Bishop's Highway.
Yeah, we don't own that land.
Town-owned land there where there's no people.
Yeah, I can speak for that.
Sure.
The, so the, the property behind Lowe's, I'm not super, or behind the fire station, I'm not super familiar with. I don't believe it is all town-owned. And relative to the one out by Bishop's Highway, that is conservation land. We did look at that parcel. Part of the considerations as well was accessibility, right? So the, as designed, and I didn't mention this tonight, but I mentioned it last meeting, as designed, this parcel, access to it, it's going to cost the town nothing besides man-hours to build it. But quite literally, we looked at every single town-owned parcel that was not conservation land and it had to be outside of 500 feet from a home, 500 feet from a roadway. This was the only one that met those, those standards, out of every parcel that's town-owned and not conservation land.
Doug, I pulled up the GIS real quick from the website. It looks like the town owns a little strip of land behind the fire station, but the big land that's totally undeveloped is actually owned by Lowe's. So unfortunately, we don't, we don't own that patch.
I thought I'd mention. Could you throw the map you had up earlier again?
Sorry, we were all mapping your area to try to figure out if that was a possibility.
Actually, I have a copy of the two.
Just, I just wanted everyone to take, see what I'm talking about. We are right now dealing with a developer that wants to remove all of this data. That's why I'm saying, if that happens, we'll be hearing firing range, trains, loud wastewater treatment plant, Route 3. Yeah, what else would we be hearing? And what would that effect have on your range?
Sure, I can speak for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Relative to that proposed property that the gentleman was referring to, I believe it was proposed as a 40B project. So that parcel land would potentially be within 500 feet of the firing range. So that, that was something that we looked into. So with that said, that proposal occurred in 2022, still is not set in stone, right? I would not, this is kind of one of those risk versus reward conversations, right? The risk that you're taking in approving this is minimal in that the level of investment is minimal, right? So if hypothetically, that 40B, which does not exist, is approved, the potential loss of the range, if worst-case scenario occurs, is really a loss of $0, right? But there are several remedies that could occur if that 40B is approved. One, depending on where on the property it is approved, where the final building is, may or may not cause it to be within 500 feet, so it would depend on the actual placement of those residences. And then additionally, one exception to that 500-foot rule from a residence is written permission from the landowner. I would suspect if a developer wants to place some, something there, they would likely be motivated to work with the town to understand the town's needs as well, which may include giving us written permission to continue to shoot where we're shooting. There's also the potential of doing special legislation. And there's also the potential, like I discussed earlier, where intentionally kind of including in the motion, the potential of moving the range into that 200-foot standoff of the vernal pool. So if the 40B was approved and was built and was, became certified as a residence in two, three, four years, if we're within 500 feet of that final building, we could potentially shift the range slightly into that 200-foot standoff with the Conservation Commission's approval. So although that could potentially be an issue, I believe the risk versus reward, again, this is a requirement that the state puts on us to be able to fire our firearms at least twice a year. I believe the overall risk is very low compared to the reward of complying with that.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
How far are you guys out with the new fire station where you can have an indoor range?
So for the police station, I did, the chief did speak of an indoor range. We also got quotes of approximately $2.5 million, so.
Doug, this is a lot less than $2.5 million.
I know that, but these guys should have an indoor range. They are accepting donations.
Yeah, we're accepting donations. That's right, they have a revolving fund now, so they're accepting donations.
And what about the dog park?
The dog park, right.
Be shooting away from it.
Yes, correct. So we're, we're.
They're still going to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll hear it. Again, I don't think it's going to be overpoweringly loud. The dogs will hear it and they might be surprised by it, right? But it's not going to be overpoweringly loud.
So I think the key to success on this will be communication at the beginning. Like, we're putting this in, this is, you might hear this, you know, here, let us know if you have feedback.
I, I think overall, it's, it's a low risk for us to approve it, given that there's not a lot of money being put into this. So the 40B, yeah, we're worried about it, but, but we could use it for some period of time. But also, if we do discover that it is an issue, either for neighbors, for the dog park, for the school. either for neighbors, for the dog park, for the schools, we can revisit this and put some restrictions on this.
And that's what I was just going to close with.
Yeah.
It is a neighborhood. It's not just my house, Paul's house. It is a neighborhood. I support you guys. You know, you're always there. We're real lucky to have such a great force that we have. I still think there's a better solution, a better location somewhere, but thanks for listening to me.
I appreciate it. And also, you know, we appreciate people being willing to come and make comments, right? And obviously, we're going to continue to work with anybody. If your neighbors, if anybody else has concerns, especially as we open up, come to us. We're happy to address them, try to mitigate them before the board has to hear them even, right? So we'll do our best to work with everybody to come to a reasonable solution where we're able to accomplish our training needs and also be respectful of the nearby community. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, I would welcome a motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the use of town property located at northwestern portion of parcel 66-50, also known as Off Cranberry Road, north of the transfer station and northwest of the wastewater treatment plant, for the purposes of establishing, operating, and maintaining a firing range for the Kingston Police Department contingent to the Conservation Commission's approval if the proposed project is within Commission jurisdiction. Second.
Sorry, can I ask one more question? Sorry. I know we talked to the transfer station folks. Did we talk to wastewater treatment plant employees just to make sure that they're aware?
They are aware.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Nope. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck, and thank you to the neighbors.
Thank you. Yeah, let us know. Keep us posted on how it goes.
All right.
You know how to reach us.
Our next item is a request for a one-day liquor license from Independent Fermentations Brewing LLC.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the one-day liquor license request from Paul Nixon of Independent Fermentation Brewing LLC for Kingston Collections Food Truck and Artisan Festival on May 17th from, sorry, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep in mind, that is Election Day, so come vote, then go to the festival, or go to the festival, and then come vote, either way.
Vote and beer, beer then, no, vote then beer.
Vote then beer.
Votes then beer, nothing but beer?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Additional items. We have an appointment of a COA van driver. The Council on Aging has multiple vacancies for a van driver. After the recruitment process, our director is recommending the hiring of Eileen Bulger to the position. Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint Eileen Bulger, Bulger or Bulger?
Bulger.
Bulger. To the position of COA van driver, a grade-three, step-two, non-exempt position within the KTEU labor, labor with the Council on Aging department, an anticipated start date of May 5th, 2025, contingent with the terms in the offer letter.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I know you just.
And then we have an appointment of an Assistant Director of Elder Affairs due to a promotional hire. The position of Assistant Director of Elder Affairs is vacant, and after the recruitment process, Holly, the COA director, is recommending the hiring of Stacy Driscoll to the position. Did you want to say something?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Stacy's joining us tonight. Stacy Driscoll has worked and volunteered within the Elder Service Network for the past 16 years and brings a wide range of experience and knowledge to Kingston. She's held various roles in local councils on aging, including receptionist, office manager, transportation coordinator, nutrition coordinator, and most recently, an outreach coordinator. Stacy currently chairs her town's Triad Committee. She oversees both the Senior Tax Workoff Program and Volunteer Program and coordinates events and activities at her senior center. Stacy's familiar with all facets of a council on aging, and her passion for working with seniors is evident by her dedication and successfully, her successful execution in all of these roles within each municipality she has worked for, and by volunteering her time to civic organizations and numerous boards and commissions in her neighborhood. I'm thrilled to welcome Stacy to the town of Kingston and looking forward to working alongside of her at the senior center as the new Assistant Director of Elder Affairs. Hello, Stacy.
All right. Any questions?
The Wage and Personnel Board voted unanimously in support of this appointment, so just worth noting. They did.
Any questions, comments? Nope. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to appoint Stacy Driscoll to the position of Assistant Director of Elder Affairs, a Schedule D5 exempt position as part of the Wage and Personnel Bylaw with an anticipated start date of May 12th, 2025, contingent with the terms in the offer letter.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Holly's excited, too.
Yeah. All right. The next item is a request to deem Streets, Trees, and Parks vehicle lift and a 2012 Ford F-550 surplus equipment. So we have Mohawk 25R, 25,000-pound four-post truck lift, whatever that is, and the 2012 Ford F-550 as surplus equipment.
It's a cool name, it's a cool name for a truck, a Mohawk.
Do we have any, any questions? And if not, a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen declare the Mohawk 25R, 25,000-pound four-post truck lift and a 2012 F-550 as surplus.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, next, we have a review of our annual town meeting results. So at the annual town meeting, voters chose not to create a Department of Public Works. Based on the results, town administrators seeking direction for what we want to do with the Superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks. So it was voted down, but at the point that the vote was taken, I believe there were only 90 people there.
And it was a lot, the vote was by 10.
Right. It was, it was off by 10. But what we heard pretty loudly from everybody, including from the Sewer Department themselves, was if it's a good idea now, it'll be a good idea in a year, or in the future. And we were asked to hold off, but we didn't hold off. And there was some pushback because they felt like there was a lot of, a lot of information presented, that people didn't feel like they were ready to make a decision. And we have been, or at least I've received, feedback that we should keep moving forward in that direction, moving towards a DPW. And some even said that they had changed their vote.
By the end of the meeting.
By the end of the meeting, that they had, they had wished that they could go back and, but of course, we had made that.
We don't have reconsideration anymore.
We don't have reconsideration anymore, but.
I mean, after the fiasco that was.
I know, I know.
In my opinion, I think, based on the feedback that I've received, I feel like we need to move forward, evaluate the job description a little bit more, some of the options that we could potentially take, maybe go out and talk to some other towns, which we didn't do. I mean, we looked at what other towns were doing, but we didn't spend a long, much time actually speaking with other DPWs. But I also think we need to have some open houses for the public because we didn't do that. So our meetings were, you know, one of the things was, folks were surprised that we decided this after just four meetings. Again, it wasn't.
Well, I think some of the objections, but I think some of the objections raised or questions asked are easily answered.
Yes.
And it informs the sticking points, right? So we heard feedback about the job description, some of the questions, some sort of administrative issues that I think are easily addressable. And I think with a vote of 10 being the swing, so 10 people more were against it than were in favor of it, that tells me it's close. It's not a resounding no. It's a no but. So I think if we address the but, and we talk about how we make, how we can make this work and why this is the better option, and we do that in our meetings, I mean, maybe this needs to be a recurring agenda item on our meetings so that we can discuss the DPW as a board in these meetings and move forward with this, because I still think this is the right direction for our town.
I agree. And I think, I think what we need to do is potentially have some meetings with our own town staff to make sure that the department, that the town staff working in those departments, it would potentially be under a DPW, so that they understand what the differences would be. So we could do that over the coming months, as well as having some open houses for the public to come in and get a better understanding of why. Because one of the big pushbacks was, well, how is this going to make, how is this going to change my life? There was, you know, the one woman who was, that I was speaking with, she just said, well, how is my life going to change? You know, and I think I addressed it, but I think it would serve us well to make sure that everybody understands why, why it's important. You know, like, one of the benefits was that we could, I forget who brought it up, but somebody brought it up in the meeting, that we could, maybe it was after the meeting, that we could bring in-house a lot of the engineering that we outsource. Because if we have a engineer, a licensed engineer with that experience in-house, then some of the engineering studies that we pay for, you know, through consulting contracts, we could, we wouldn't have to do that. Not everything, but.
And it might not delay some of those, too. So sometimes waiting for engineering, if this person is able to do that, that will move that, move those projects along a little faster.
Right. But I think it could, could cover the additional cost, which is that $30,000 over a superintendent. So I think, I don't think I'm hearing anybody here saying that we shouldn't pursue this. So I guess the issue is, what's our short term? Right now, we have Sean Turner. He is the interim Highway Superintendent. We have some options. Obviously, I don't, I wouldn't recommend that we go out searching for a superintendent to replace him. One of the things that we could do is just continue with him. But right now, he is performing, and it's the summer month, so he's a little bit busier right now. So we are short, he's covering both the superintendent and a foreman.
Which in fairness, is sort of how the job description was mapped out. I mean, the job, not the job description, but the hierarchy that you presented at town meeting.
Correct.
It's one role.
But we just don't have that.
We don't have the DPW director.
We don't have the DPW director, so we would have a foreman.
Is he willing to continue? Okay.
So we may need to discuss, we're probably not going to have an answer tonight, but some of the options could be that we could hire a short-term foreman or something to help fill in, or potentially a summer hire. What were you going to say?
Yeah, if I could, just, you know, certainly, as the chair mentioned, it's a busy time of year for Streets, Trees, and Parks. Excuse me, I'm sure Sean would love the extra help. You know, I'd like the opportunity, if I could, to work with him to identify, is there a, is there a, somebody there now who they could, you know, to promote into Sean's old job on an interim basis, and maybe bring a, you know, a laborer or a equipment operator in on a, on a seasonal basis to try to fill out the staff over there. The funding is available, it's been approved, so we wouldn't be looking for any extra money.
The funding for the DPW director position?
The funding for the position. So there's, you know, there's a DPW position funded now. There's also a foreman position, equipment operators and whatnot. So if we were to backfill with current staff and, you know, bring somebody in as an equipment operator, you know, the funding is there to do that. And then when the board decides they want to bring something forward, if it does get approved at town meeting, you know, then we can revisit all those things. And if it doesn't, then we can look to more permanently staff the positions that are, that are there. So I get happy to bring back a proposal to the board after talking to Sean. I think it's going to be his. You know, I'm going to rely on him to provide that information, whether he thinks that somebody internally can backfill his position, and then we hire somebody as an equipment operator, or if there's somebody from the outside who temporarily wants to be the foreman, we could, we could work in that, in that manner as well. So if the board wants us to come back with a proposal, we can do that. If you want us just to try to fill that, under the, you know, under the expectations of the current staffing levels that have been budgeted for, we can certainly do that as well. It's up to the board.
Would that be a temporary position, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I think it would.
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I think it would make sense to talk to Sean to figure out what the best, because it, you know, he is getting hit with the double duty. So whatever would work best for him in terms of lightening that workload. And I think that does make sense.
Okay. Does the board want to approve that?
And also, he's doing a great job, just for the record.
He is.
He's done a fabulous job at just managing everything and trying to deal with some of the challenges they has. He had a presentation tonight for the roads. Bad news is, we had a software flaw. Good news is, because of that software flaw, the estimates that were being provided by the software were higher than they need to be. So when you see him come in in two weeks, there'll be probably double the number of roads, at least, that we'll be looking to pave.
Great flaw.
I like when the software is in our favor.
We never had a good flaw.
It's the flaw, and again, it's not that much of a flaw from the software. There's also additional funding through Chapter 90 that we're taking into consideration. So Sean, I think we'll have some great news for the board in two weeks and for the, and for the voters and the public. Unfortunately, couldn't do that tonight, but, you know, if you'd like us to come back in a couple of weeks with a formal proposal on how we'd like to fill his positions, we can, he's going to be here anyways. We can do both of those items at the same time.
I think that makes sense. And I also think it would make sense to put DPW on our regular.
Even if it's just, we have no updates since last time, just to have it so that we have the option of talking about it.
Right. I agree.
So do you move the Board of Selectmen, request the town administrator to speak with the Acting Streets, Trees, and Parks Superintendent about his willingness to serve as acting superintendent until after Fall Town Meeting?
Second.
So if I could, and maybe you want to modify the motion, it's up to you. But I have spoken to Sean. He is willing to continue.
Then we don't need a motion.
I don't want to speak.
I would say.
Past town meeting at this point.
Yeah.
All right, so I withdraw my motion.
In my second.
And I would just say, just go ahead and speak to him and come back with a proposal.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
We'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next item is approval of Silver Lake Parcel. At the 2023 Fall Town Meeting, transfer of a surplus parcel of land owned by Silver Lake Regional School District to the town of Kingston was approved as part of the upcoming Lake Street culvert replacement and stormwater improvement project. The agenda item is requesting the Board of Selectmen accept the property for municipal purposes. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen accept for municipal purposes as authorized pursuant to Article 16 of the October 24th, 2023 Special Town Meeting warrant, and further to authorize the chair to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm starting to use the word "effectuate" more often.
It's effectual. All right. Appointment of an interim tax collector. So the elected position of the tax collector expires May 17th, 2025. The position will be interim until next year, when a duly, duly-appointed position of treasurer, collector will be hired. So right now, this is just a sort of housekeeping to give us through to next year.
Is it really July 1st, or would we want to align it with the election date?
Yeah, it's, it's, so it's, it's officially, the term ends after the election date, depending on the timing of, you know, we're going to have, I would ask that the board support advertising the position, having interviews and bringing forward a candidate. It gave us a little bit of wiggle room, frankly, until July 1st, but we can certainly start the process early enough to make sure that we've got a candidate there. But I just, so if you want to make it.
So the term ends for the treasurer role, election date 2026, but he would also be, no.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So he would also be potentially interim from whatever that date is through July 1st.
If the board is more comfortable doing it until.
I just want to align them. That's all.
Yeah. It's up to you.
I mean, I'm fine with it being July 1st, as long as we understand that, you know, we may have to do another interim for a short period of time so that we can, it's easier for budgeting purposes, too, I think, to have it consistent, so we know what it is through July 1st. Okay.
Yeah, and I assume we'll have to, come Election Day in 2026, we'll have to do an interim.
Yeah, good. Yep. All right. So would someone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Kenneth Moalley as interim tax collector until July 1st of 2026.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We do not have meeting minutes. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have scheduled the first Silver Lake Regional School Study Committee that's going to be held next Tuesday night, a week from tonight, at 6:00 in this room. It'll be televised on PAC TV, because we have Kingston Board and Committee members that are on there, so we're required, required to do that. So we'll have those meetings here. Hoping in the first meeting to, you know, identify a chair and a vice chair, try to come up with a scope, or at least start the scope of a study. come up with a scope, or at least start the scope of a study, and try to lay out, if we can, some sort of a tentative meeting date to get in people's calendars, so we can, we can try to meet with as full a board as we possibly can, with the hope of potentially interviewing and, and bringing on a, an outside consultant sooner rather than later to get that, that project started. So we'll keep the, Missy is the Board of Selectmen representative on that committee, and I'm sure either she or I will be happy to keep the board up to date on what's going on and what's transpiring. So looking forward to getting that going. The Old Colony Planning Commission, just so people are aware, will be conducting their quarter study, its quarter safety study at the Kingston Plymouth, in Kingston and Plymouth, starting this, starting this summer on Route 80. So you will start seeing traffic counters out there, just so people are aware that that's what they're for. The sewer, just to let everybody, make sure everybody's aware, the Sewer Commission is holding their public hearing tomorrow night, I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow night, May 15th, at 6:30 in Room 200, in this room, to discuss their sewer rates and how they're going to address their, the funding needs for their budget. So if anybody wants to come, it is a public hearing. And then Mast EP held their annual inspection of our transfer station over the past week. The transfer station is in great shape and approved, it was, approved, all aspects were approved by the state, so we're happy that the guys up there are doing a great job and, and the facility is in great shape and will be operational for another year. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No? Any Selectmen comments?
Just wanted to mention, I did get a message from the, the tax title custodian who had some suggested procedures that, that he sent along and forwarded to Keith, and, and will probably bring it to the board at some point in the near future. It has to incorporate Mast general law, so we just have to figure that out.
Yeah, I think we've got a tentatively scheduled for two weeks from tonight.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll, just, and we'll reach out to, to the custodian to make sure he's available, and if he is, we'll, we'll schedule for the 20th.
Sounds great. Thank you.
You bet.
Would you like to make any comments?
I, yeah, I'll, I'll make one.
Give a speech. Speech, speech.
So 10 years ago, no. I'll keep, I'll keep it brief, which is a very difficult thing for me. No, um.
It's already too long.
Yeah. No, I just want to say thank you to, yeah, for the town of Kingston, for letting me, electing me to be in this position. I, I've really enjoyed these three years of learning with an incredible board. I think that's, I think that's the main thing, is that I just want to say, is, is as a board, I'm really proud of us disagreeing well. And I think that's really impressive, because I don't think we see that a lot in life, whether it's in national politics, local politics, state politics, wherever, jobs, we don't, just, people don't disagree well, and I think that whether it's been, you know, Sheila in the seat, or Jess in the seat, or this current board, like, we've all been able to disagree well and walk away as colleagues and friends, and, and I'm really proud of that, and I'm just really thankful to work with an incredible board, and frankly, for a town to let me kind of grow, you know, in the, over these three years of, of learning, and for Keith for being an incredible asset to our town, a friend and somebody who we can rely on as, as, you know, to, to run the day-to-day operations. Chief Mark, just being incredible fire chief for just taking care of the health and the wellness of our town, and Chief Brian, same thing. I mean, just our safety and our public safety, and taking us into the next level of where we need to go as a town. And you guys are just incredible patriots, heroes, and, and champions of Kingston, whether you live here, you don't. We have an incredible staff in this town. Everybody has their issues, everybody has their problems. I just think that we have an incredible group of people working in this town, and I think it reflects the people that are in this town, who are equally incredible and amazing people, just like the people I grew up with, and I got to be surrounded by, that helped make, you know, me be the semi-decent human being that I am. I got to be surrounded by amazing coaches, teachers, and friends, and, and police officers and firemen, and we still have that kind of old school, we've mentioned it before, kind of that leave it to Beaver. We've, we've said it a few times, and, and we still have that old school.
Seaside community.
Yes, seaside, old-school seaside community that people enjoy, and I love racing my kids here, I love living here. And I just thank, yeah, thank the people for allowing me to do it, and for just, you know, people always say it's a thankless position, and I just don't think that. I think that it, there's a lot of incredible people, and I've, I've met, I, there was people that I thought I was gonna be enemies with that I've become friends with. And there's, I guess, there's people I thought I was gonna be friends with that I've become enemies with. That's very few. No, but in general, I, I think that there's a willingness in this town to work together and, and to build Kingston up, and I've just been really blessed to be a part of it and see this side of it, and so I can appreciate what the people who we hire and we pay with our taxpayer money to run this town do. And what they do is a lot. And I'm eternally grateful for our staff and for, yeah, for all of you, too. So thank you.
Tyler, the first time I talked to you, we were arguing. The public has seen us argue in meetings. And I have no doubt that we will see you again at that microphone, telling us when we're doing something that you don't agree with.
I cannot wait to yell from the cheap seats. Next week, I'm coming in.